You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 13th, 2024 meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Everyone please stand for the pledge.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. So Samantha, you want to do the roll call for us today? I can keep track here. Are you going to call out the names? So it's not just me? Okay, President Dinah Dumbries. Present. Vice President Samantha Arnold, present. Ralph Box.
I'm here.
Sam Paxton.
Here.
Rich Young.
Here.
Joan Lewis. Virtual, okay. Brad Adamsky.
Here.
Gary Bendix.
Yo.
Mark Swistick.
Present.
Jean Paxton.
She's on the...
Yeah. Matt Fallon.
Nope.
Ray Dumbries.
Nope.
Isaac Zekel.
Yes.
I'm here. And Bob Sokowski. Okay. Having completed that, let's move on to adopting the meeting agenda. I sent one of those out earlier this morning. I forgot it last night. And anyway, if there are any additions or corrections to this, please, let's take care of that right now.
Well, Sam had forwarded the quote that Bob got for having an intersection fixed. And I just want to make sure that we go through that.
Okay. New business then for that.
I was gonna ask Bob the top line.
I can just do it in my report. Okay, but I'd also like to add that we probably should discuss the roadwork we want to do next year just to kind of get a plan in place so we can get the engineering firms pointed in that direction to quote that effort. And so I think we somehow need to add the CCMG grant.
Okay, so I'm just gonna put this, both of them, under new business anyway. Paving, so that we have it actively listed. Paving, birchwood, at our portal. And then paving plan for 2025, right?
It's just that we want to have that in place before we begin the year. It takes months to go through that process.
Okay. Plan for 2025, CCMG. Okay, very good. Alright, so we've got those two. Anything else to add?
Now, I want a motion to approve these. Do you agree with those additions?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Under item 12, communications received.
Yes.
I believe we also received an email from a resident. We had even a day today.
Yes.
About the proposed...
Pickleball.
...of the pickleball.
Yes.
For pickleball, Pennsyl Court.
Yes, okay. Pickleball court, okay. I added that under the communications for B.
Okay.
Anything else? Nope? Okay. Then I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we have one more thing. Approval of the June meeting minutes.
Yep. Oh, the park. I thought the park board meeting's on the 28th, not the 29th.
Jean, can you please tell me what's going on? Is it 28th or 29th?
I gotta update it.
Well, the following part of the meeting is done.
It's Thursday the 29th.
29th, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. June Town Council meeting minutes. Okay. Alright, again, I need a motion to approve. Ralph, did you move to approve?
I made the motion to approve with those variety of changes.
Okay.
I second it.
Alright, Sam, second. So Ralph Box moved. Sam Paxton seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five ayes. Okay, let's move on to the minutes. Joan provided us with the minutes this afternoon. So we have, let's take a look what's in here. Okay. So we have the minutes of the June 11th meeting, which Joan reworked to make the various corrections. Have you had a chance to review those minutes? I can't tell which one's which.
This did not open up in Google very well.
Does anyone remember what those particular corrections were?
I don't know any changes to anything.
Okay. That's from the June 11th meeting minutes because Joan was redoing those. Okay? I see a yellow thing here. Something, was it something about, there's a yellow marker marked right here by CCMG? No, that looks CCG.
What is, I don't understand what she's saying.
Okay. We did not approve the minutes of last month's meeting.
All over to Bob. Sam Paxton to present CE with the county council.
Okay, there's two copies.
I'm unable to understand them on my clipboard.
That's what it looks like now.
Okay. I have no idea what that means.
Okay, so now, but remember, recall, we have two sets of minutes. June 11th and July 9th. So at last month's meeting, we did not approve the June 11th because there were some issues, some questions. Does anyone recall what those particular questions were?
Yeah.
So that we could go back and see it. I did not bring my copy of last month's minute that I had with me. No, I don't have anything else in here.
Last month?
Yeah, there were some questions raised. If you recall, I don't recall exactly what it was. And I cannot tell on these minutes that Joan left for us.
Minutes.
Um, we...
Equipment change, that's all.
I just said wait to approve until next month.
What section was that under? Do you remember?
I have no time complete.
What was the draft? One might have it.
Well, I'll wait till Joan gets back.
Okay. Alright. Alright, so then I will table the approval of the June 11th meeting minutes until our next meeting takes place in September. Everyone okay with that?
What recording does Joan listen to?
The one that Kevin puts together. She can also...
Is hers for...
We...
...access here?
It's recorded on Dinah's account.
Yes.
So Dinah would have to get her the phone.
Yes, but Joan generally can't open it. In the past, I've sent it to Kevin, and Kevin has taken care of it for her, right? The Zoom meeting recording?
I didn't think you did Zoom.
No, this time around you did because she didn't, Joan had not asked me for it. But I could provide that in the future.
I don't believe that I'm the softest spoken person here. I think Ralph has got a softer voice than I do. How come she can't understand what I'm saying?
It's hard to actually hear on Zoom. It's actually hard to hear everybody.
Everybody's voice on Zoom. But Joan was with us, you know, then. And so you were here at the last meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so you were, that should have been okay. Alright, well then, let's put that aside until next month, okay? I'm tabling that. Okay, so, tabled. Let's leave that to the side. Okay. So now we have the minutes of the July 9th meeting. Do you have any questions or comments about the July 9th meeting minutes?
I do not.
Anyone else? Rich, have you had a chance to read them, or Sam?
I don't like them today. I haven't had a chance to read them.
No, I don't.
Is it a CC?
I think we're going to have to ask the clerk treasurer once again to send these minutes. I know that we have mentioned that, but we should ask officially that they be prepared and sent to us, you know, perhaps by the end of the week before the meeting takes place in order to give, you know, more time for reading it, so...
However, the work that the clerk treasurer does, that we need time to be able to review it properly.
I agree. And I think that this is not something out of the ordinary for us to request. So Brad, I don't know what's best done, just personally speaking about it. Do we need to do something else?
I think if you just request that she get it to you Friday before, whatever the deadline is.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be great.
Alright, okay, fine. So then, we will do that. So do, what about these, approving the minutes of the July 9th?
I don't think you can approve it because I haven't had a chance to renew.
Right, so then let's table these as well. Is that okay with everyone? Okay.
Yes.
Alright. Alright, so I'm setting those aside. Thank you. Okay, now we can move on. We could probably move on with the accounts payable, various items, because those, we do have copies of, I believe. Alright, June 30. I'm just looking, what is the June 30 payroll? August 13 vouchers. Forgive me if I'm just talking to myself. It's July 30th, additional appropriations. I'm gonna start with the June 30th and then go into July 30th and then August vouchers, okay?
July 15th, July 30th and August 13th, right?
Okay, June 13, I have June, no, June 30, two copies. The June 30th, 2024 payroll taxes.
No, what she sent today...
This is what Joan, this is what I have in Joan's file.
Oh, okay, the folder, okay.
Okay, is there something else that was sent to us? Wait, wait. I made copies of those too, so is there something else in here? June 30th payroll taxes was in other things Joan sent us today, August 13th. Okay, then there were July 20th additional. Okay, that's all I'm showing here.
July 1, or July 3.
She sounds...
No, I'm just looking to see what I, what I see here. I may not have seen it, right? July, it just says July 2024 additional checks. Okay, and the sheet that looks like this is, I printed that off today after, just to have it. Okay.
He sent us...
So it's one of those that was sent to us today.
That was July 15th. That's this one.
Oh.
Hold on, sorry.
Oh, there's that.
That was the July 15th.
Okay, alright.
That's July 30th.
July 30th.
And there's July 30th. Okay, this is the additional vouchers and then the...
Okay.
This is the payroll taxes, which is...
Payroll taxes 30, June 30, July 24. What do we have here? July 30th additional appropriations, two copies, and August vouchers. This is all I have here. And there's nothing listed on these vouchers. So unless it's in here. I'm sorry that it's taking us this long to look at this, but again...
So we've got...
I have one.
I just came over at 4:40 PM today.
Yes, oh, I know, I know.
For the record.
Because I sat down at about 6:00 to take a look, not 6:00, a little bit before 6:00 to look at these, okay.
So we have, let's go through in order, June.
Alright, June, I have the June 30th, 2024 payroll taxes.
Payroll taxes.
Right, so if you have a copy of that in front of you and can take a look at it...
We do not.
Oh, you do not have access to it?
It was on the meeting.
It doesn't open? July, okay.
Yep.
It says she labeled the file name July 24, but the report itself says...
Yeah.
June, oh, okay.
Okay. Alright, so this includes Medicare tax, FICA, federal taxes, FICA withholding, payroll, Medicare tax withholding employees, state tax withholding employees, county report tax withholding employees. Do you want me to go through these?
No.
No? Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Okay. Ralph Box makes a motion to approve. Okay, the June 30 payroll. I need a second.
I second.
Okay. Samantha Arnold, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. Go ahead and start signing. Okay? And that motion has been passed for the June 30th payroll taxes. Let us take a look now. Okay, and that's gonna come around for you to sign. Okay, the next document I have here is July 2024 additional checks. Is that the label on here? Or additional appropriations?
Additional vouchers.
Yep, July...
Well, on this top sheet, it says additional appropriations here on our cover sheet. And under here, it says...
This one. It says...
She named the file additional vouchers.
Additional vouchers, this one?
Does it look like is the first one is postage? Yes.
Yep, yep.
Alright, okay. I'm looking at the ones Joan, you know, printed out. Alright.
So that's got...
Any questions on those? It says postage, education, telephone, internet, professional services, software costs, computer tech, insurance, garage and street lights, garage heat, and park and playground equipment.
I'll make a motion to approve those vouchers.
Okay.
That's it, okay.
Alright, so we have Ralph Box moving, and then we have Samantha Arnold, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, five ayes. Alright, so these vouchers have been approved. Okay, here we go. Let's pass this on for signing. I'll get them at the end. Alright, now we have town of Michiana Shores additional vouchers consisting of two pages. An exception for accounts payable not allowed is shown on the registry, such accounts are in the total of $29,874.63. It's what I see on this, so...
This must be the August...
This must be these, yes.
13.
2417. Hold on. No, the last sum she's got here is like totally off the wall.
That must be this one.
Oh, okay, that belongs to the FICA one. Okay, here we go. Let's see what, oh yes, here we go. That was mixed in there for, with Joan's papers.
Because we already did that one.
Right, we already did that one, so we're good on that.
It should be a...
There it is. There's a sheet that says 29,874.63. So this included the tapings, phone, travel, internet, King K Park, garage waters, assistive printers, rental, public safety, valid walkout mowing, mowing, cutting down tree, a couple of trees, I believe, toner, property garbage, and public safety and police protection. You have it online, so do we have any questions or concerns about these amounts?
I have just a concern about the payment to Mick Wolf for mowing the grass nine times. Do we know what timeframe that was? Is he usually not submit? I don't think he mowed them nine times in one month.
I'm sure not. And I am not sure what that means, what it covers. Is Joan still online with us? Maybe Joan can answer?
She's online and not muted.
Okay. Joan, can you answer and tell us? It's written that Mick mowed the lawn nine times, the grass. Do we know where he mowed it? It says park and other mowing, and then mowing creek path. That lists no number of times, so can you help us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And you hear me now? You can hear me now?
Yes, Joan, yes.
What is it you want to know?
Mick lawn mowing. It said he mowed the lawn nine times. What time period did this cover?
I don't have a time period for it. You can check last month. You should have it on your computer to show you if he did any last month. I gave you last month.
Yes, yes, Joan, I know it's on the computer, but we're looking right now at your voucher sheet, the one you left for us, and we're just not clear.
I can't.
Yeah, okay. Alright, we'll take a look at that. Are you trying to access it?
What's that?
Are you trying to access last month's vouchers?
Yeah.
Well, what can that tell us?
Well, not really much. Except that we find out how much is Mick doing it and is it...
Well, I just wonder if it's a catch-up or if it's for a year or for the...
Right.
Quarter.
Right. What we're looking at last month's tells us.
Yeah, well, to see if there's any bill for him for last month, I guess.
But he doesn't cut the grass every week.
No, I'm pretty sure not. It would still be good to know what the time period is, so...
Nine is a longer time period than a month or two.
Right.
He cuts the grass on the path a few times in the summer appropriately and probably more in the parks, but nine is a lot. So the guess is it's a catch-up. He probably hasn't billed us for months and it's a catch-up.
Okay. Alright, so what would you like to do about that particular question that Sam raised?
Should we wait and look and get a look at the actual bills to provide? Because those should have dates of service on them.
Right.
Could we exclude approval for a single item? If we don't do that, we'll approve everything else.
Except for this.
That we review and approve.
Okay.
But withhold on that until we get clarification.
Okay.
And I would think that we would want to understand and have the vendor submit dates along with each mowing that is...
Mm-hmm.
I don't see any from last month.
Okay, so we don't know for what time. Okay, so let us put, okay, then I would need a motion for that to address that one point, so...
I make a motion that we withhold payment on the line items submitted to Mick Wolf for $1,215 for nine lawn mowings in the parks and the other until we get clear definition of the timeframe and the dates that that covers.
Okay, thank you. So I need a second for that?
I'll second that.
Alright, Ralph Box seconded. So I made this comment here. Okay, Sam moved. Ralph Box seconded. This is for the August 13 vouchers. Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Brad, on that, when we get clarification, is it okay? How do we offer ours?
You can do a vote remotely. You don't need to do that immediately.
Okay.
To get clarification, that way you're not going to invoice for it.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Allowed connection.
Okay.
Mick, we have a question about your... For the mowing nine times. What timeframe was that?
It's on the...
You don't have it?
No, we don't have it. Joan didn't write it down for when?
June had to last week.
Okay.
So it's a month, it's almost two months. A month and one... Do you submit the dates that you mow every time you submit?
I have every Wednesday.
But when you, how does she know that you mowed nine times? You tell her I mowed nine times?
I put it on my invoice.
Okay, and on the invoice so to include the dates of each mow? Each week?
It's on every Wednesday.
Okay.
You mark three or four days, look at the calendar.
Okay.
It's been done every, for the last 10 years.
Do you normally submit?
Yes.
Like nine, nine times?
It depends on, you know, I mean, a single person having a better...
Okay.
So I think we should back up and approve.
Okay, and then remove these things since we had a question. Alright, so let us do that, okay? I think we just started to do this. I don't even know if we all, we voted on it.
We have.
We did vote on it?
We did.
I think I just asked for a motion and a second. I don't think we voted on it yet. We did? Alright, I didn't write that down. Okay?
I'll make a motion that we approve the charges for Mick for, um, that period of time.
Okay, move to approve. Okay, I need a second.
Seven.
It's Ralph, I'm sorry, Sam Paxton. Okay, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, alright, so we have now completely approved. So I am taking this. Okay. And we will tell Joan about that. So here we go. I have, we'll have to get another copy from Joan, but here are the two, two sheets here that need to be signed. These are not stapled. I don't even know if that was included among Joan's. I'm sorry, I'm looking to see what was left. I know I made a photocopy here.
What are we doing? I can't quite understand what's going on.
No, Joan, we just approved the vouchers, all of them, okay? But I only have one copy that I brought. We were missing the copy of the vouchers for August 13th, 2024 vouchers. So we're signing the two sheets, but you'll need to make yourself a copy of the, for the second one. Here we go. Just keep those papers together, please.
Dear, you're breaking up. I've got wealthy connections.
Okay, Joan, everything is fine. We just passed those vouchers. No questions anymore. Mick came and Mick got, came to the meeting. He explained, we're all good, okay? Thank you. Alright, so now I do remember on the email Joan sent, this would be for B, report on the status of outstanding collections of fines that Joan has made a report to Brad about this, that you have everything?
And that, nothing new on delinquent buildings. Brad knows everything.
Yeah, there's nothing new that, that she gave her word for a couple months.
Okay, alright, so nothing new on that. That's what she wrote, right?
Yep.
Samantha, okay, alright, thank you. So we move on. Nothing under resolutions and ordinances, I don't believe. Did we ever get that finished up, the LEAP ordinance?
Yes.
Okay?
It's...
Do we, we still need to sign that?
I prefer to bring it with me. I will spin it around. I rewrote it after we discussed it and...
Okay.
Um, yes.
Alright, so LEAP ordinance Samantha will provide. Samantha will provide, copy to sign.
Yes.
Okay, alright, very good. Thank you. Let's move on to departmental.
Just a second.
Oh, sorry.
If you can get the copy to Joan, we can swing by and sign off on it during the week.
Yeah.
We don't have to wait till next month.
Okay.
That's true, okay.
I can email it to her.
Yeah, alright, awesome. I mean, I know I got it in my, you know, in the email, but...
Oh, you know, I was gonna print it off here. Let me go.
Well, I thought you, I thought you sent it to Joan in three, three...
That was the signed contract, not the receipt.
Yeah, that was the signed contract. That was different.
Oh, I think I just need you guys to, yeah, anyway, also I...
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Approve the cost, fine cost that I sent us.
There's still, there's still paper here.
Oh. Yeah. I'll show you.
Alright, okay. Chief Swistick, please, sorry.
Good evening. During the month of July, each police department responded to 471 calls for service when compared to 328 in previous year for an increase of 143 calls. During the month of July 13, incident reports were documented, a total of five individuals were arrested. One misdemeanor arrest related to operating a motor vehicle intoxicated. Four misdemeanor arrests for driving with a suspended driver's license specifically during the month related to the town of Michiana Shores. On July 19, Corporal Matthew, I'm sorry, Deputy Matthew Dizbo was dispatched to 400 block of time to drive in reference to a 59-year-old female making suicidal comments. During the investigation, it was determined that the threats were not of recent, and Deputy Dizbo provided the individual resources for mental health and a case report was documented. We'd like to take a moment from today, many may be, they may aware across from King K Park, Oakdale and Florida Block. There was a medical call today. I'd like to commend the Michiana Volunteer Fire Department. They were first on scene along with Corporal Frye from our department and Sergeant Capado from Trail Pre-Pre-Release Department. And all of them performed lifesaving measures to the female who was there, and she was transported by ambulance to Grand Siskin Hospital. And I was also present on scene, would like to commend all of them for their efforts in CPR and that. They did a great job. Hopefully she recovers.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Second, any questions?
Chief, I just want to say thank you. We have the first, or they have the radar sign mounted on our portal, and I want to thank you for making us aware of the opportunity that we took advantage of. We will, we download the data for you from time to time and we'll share it with you. We just did the first download. We just did the first download on our sign on Chatsworth Drive, 25 miles per hour. So I think the average speed through there was like 26.7 miles per hour. There's a few outliers that were, you know, probably over 35 and a half. But for the most part, the feedback we got from our residents, it's been beneficial. So I don't have traffic, so.
Okay, awesome, good, thank you. All right, fire chief is not here, but I'm thinking that Bob Skalkowski might give us a report.
Earlier, 159 and a half hours for July. The tent was a business meeting, 72 training, 24 training, a third person generally. On the third time, that for medical call, and fourth, I heard less of structure fire. Also on the fourth, a mansion for a CO owner. Also on the fourth, shadow trail for a CO owner. And the fifth, Mohawk for a fire alarm. The fifth, Simo for medical department. Seven shock calls for medical call. Eight hillside for structure fire. Want to commend the guys for that when the air conditioner outside is on fire. They really get there quick and put it out. The eighth, Highway 12 for medical call. The tenth, Nolly for a structure fire usually. Twelve, Green Wall for medical call. Twelve hillside trail for medical call. Fourteenth, Oakdale Drive for lines down. Fifteenth, shadow trail for tree down in the house. Sixteenth, Algonquin for bodies down. Seventeenth, potash train for a fire alarm. Twenty-second, arch block for a fire alarm on Beach usually. Also on another beach, wait for line beach on the 23rd. Twenty-fourth, I got for medical call. Twenty-fifth, potash train for fire alarms. Twenty-fifth, man juice for fire alarms. Twenty-eighth, arrowhead for medical call. Twenty-ninth, I got for medical call. So for total, Michigan short, three fires, one first responder, Michigan, Michigan, five fires, three first responders, little of two fires and four first responders. Each LA with four fires and one each LA. We are now over, we're at 101 calls a year now, which is a call.
Yeah, sounds like. Thank you very much, Chief. Okay, building commissioner, any questions for fire questions, no? Okay, I shared with the other council members, the building commissioner report. You could see all the permits that were, you don't need me to read through these, you know, okay? So we have 12 actual permits that have already been issued. There's seven that are pending. Either waiting for a signature or waiting for their check to finish processing. And then there's a couple that I'm still trying to chase down, the people who I did some work and done work, and I still am collecting, and I will need to check and see on how best to maybe, I don't know if I can find them a second time or something for not having it, but time has passed. Anyway, nine permits, short-term rental permits were renewed, two are still in progress. Four are still booked in during this year, some until the end of the year, and then they'll have to start, you know, renewing. One was never used and one was newly approved in May, and that's the Trumper Seltzer.
So which one has never been used?
Uh, that's the one that was issued to Lena Mullins.
We never issued a permit to Lena Mullins.
Oh, well, I meant that she never.
Special use.
Right, that's what I meant. I'm wrong. A special use was granted, but she's never used it, so. So they didn't, she didn't have to, what's it called, never had to even do anything, so. I guess never got anything, so it's never used. Her BZA, but I should even take that off a year then, so I don't know that that belongs.
Was the special use approved?
A year and a half ago.
At least.
And I would need to check on your code code signs, but normally if you get a variance for special use and don't use it in a year, it's basically.
Okay. Didn't we include that, something about that?
Uh, for the, with the new ordinance updates we did late last year, we did. We did not have that specific item in the ordinance before.
So.
But it's a BZA thing, not a short-term rental ordinance.
And that's what I refer to as zoning boards. So if you get a variance or you get approved for something, you're expected to, whether it's a variance for use or variance for developing standards, for instance, you got something to build a garage, and if you don't start the garage for over a year, it can expire.
Okay, so is that the usual course?
That's the state code.
Oh, that's the state code, okay.
That works on the year goes with it.
Yeah, we don't have anything that conflicts with that.
That's the house on Fall Out, right?
Yes, yes.
I do know that they rent, but they don't do short term.
Right, those are long-term rentals that she's got, yeah.
So they issue.
Yeah, so.
So Diana, I would request a couple of things, if you could. You are the owner of the master list of short-term.
Right.
If you could provide an update to that.
Yes.
Not much, and only have update required.
Yeah.
And then we can see if anybody else is an outlier. Maybe the approach would be to have the BZA in this particular case. Send them a letter saying their special use grant is null and void.
Okay. Now, the documents that I have from Deb, and I didn't find anything else when I looked online on the Google documents. All I have is the one sheet that, as a matter of fact, you gave me an extra copy of that one that lists the STRs and the renewals. So it lists these, for instance, the one that was never used, and then the newly approved one, like in this little box towards the bottom, but I don't have anything that tells me all the BZA special use grants that have been issued. I've never seen that document, okay?
Well, all right, if it has a permit, it's got a BZA.
Right, okay.
At the bottom of Deb's document, there's a category that has things that are in floats. And this particular.
Right, then there are four that are.
Has always been listed there.
Right, that's right, and it says right there to the center, because the last four things listed were people who are renting without any kind of permits. Those are the last four, yeah. Okay, I'll just, I'll burn up anyway, then just distribute that, okay? All right, we'll do. But I'm just thinking the BZA, I don't know, are there any others that were, were granted then? The BZA was that it?
Deb would have put them on the list.
Okay, all right.
She was on top of it.
Okay. All right, so let's move on. For enforcement, I have nothing else, you know, to add for that. Park Board, Gene Paxton, please.
Uh, the park board met on July 42. A picnic was mentioned and discussed. We finalized budget outcomes for the next five years. And we finalized that and we gave the budget for 2025 to town council member Ralph Fox in person that night, as well as emailed the town council members. And the quote treasure of our main goals for the near future are replacement of the Kincaid Park fence. This will be done without tax funds, rather. Material donated by the boosters and labor provided by volunteers. Our major 2025 project will be resurfacing at the pickleball court, Tennis Court Pickleball Court. We have asked the council to include $5,000 in the 2025 budget with $8,000 additional coming from larger private donations and $5,000 coming from the boosters. Skip Mafo was heading up a fundraising campaign for this, and the response to the fundraising has been overwhelming. He has well surpassed the $8,000 mark. And the regraveling and the regrading of the Old Nature Trail is now being processed by Sandcastle. We are meeting again on August 29 at 7:00. And at that time, we'll be working on establishing an RFP for the maintenance contract for 2025.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any questions to the park board? None, okay. All right, thank you very much. Gene, could you please submit your report in written form as well, via email to us? All right, thank you very much. Then we can just add it to files. Thank you so much. All right, road commissioner, Bob Skalkowski.
Over 13 hours for the month of July. Got a tree down, did some mowing. Started getting the radar sign together. I did reach out to our asphalt and did some work for us several years ago about patching a problem area down El Portal and Birchwood. I did get a quote, which I sent to the council today. Received $300, that's the fixed, the bad spots on the porch. Grind it out, repave them, add the bad spots on Birchwood. I come down with a very good price.
Yeah.
As the patch job I did in El Portal and Oakdale, the reason why, it was $50,000.
Right.
So. I'd like to go ahead and get that project done, just because it's the worst spot in town. The other place I want to go look after these people is probably getting complaints about an anger, foots and driveways. See what we can do there.
Okay, all right.
Well, I've looked at the first body, talked about it a lot after we got your note today, and that clearly is the worst spot in town. It's the business road in town.
Right.
So I fully agree that we, I suppose we should just vote on it.
I agree.
It's under the level that requires us to get multiple quotes, correct?
Right, well below.
I believe I don't have a budget for it, but I believe it's a lot of it. I don't really use.
Oh, there's, right.
Next year's stuff, but still, this stuff needs to be done.
Absolutely, okay, I think that's a great idea. Any other comments, Sam?
When you guys looked at Birchwood from El Portal East, is that the only section that, that is bad, or is there other?
Oh, there's a couple others. First is the worst.
Oh, definitely.
It's also, as I said, it's El Portal.
I just, I just, well, fixing this would take Birchwood east of El Portal off.
Now, Birchwood, it's kind of crappy the whole way.
Okay.
Just so you hear where the reason that bad spot is there, the reason the bad spot was El Portal. We come to salt there.
Uh huh.
That's why.
Bob, is, is there an issue with the water table being super high there? Or is it just the fact that there were puddles?
It's a lot of ice.
Puddles in a place that you live in.
And that's.
No rest during.
Yeah, and that stretch of Birchwood between El Portal and Pokagon, or maybe even Groveland, it dips, and so that's why you put salt there, because it ices over. The rest of the street doesn't out higher up, but right there turns to pure ice, so I'm not surprised.
Now, there is something wrong with that one lot that's for sale. You know, that if anybody were to build, they cannot put in a regular septic system in there. There is some kind of an issue, so I don't know whether the water table's high.
Across the street, I believe it is.
Was that northeast corner?
The northeast corner, yes. And I have found that I've spoken, you know, with several people who have looked into it. They were interested in buying. And one of them actually called me back and he told me that like, no, well, you know, that there are more issues to that. And I think actually the neighbors across the street, you know, as you're mentioning there, had mentioned to, you know, any buyers who were walking around and looking like, you know, to be wearies. But I don't know technically what the problem is. You'd have to call a soil sample. Yeah, so, anyway. Have no idea if any of that affects, you know, having that lower spot or whatever for that. So let's get a motion going for.
So is there a simple motion to approve?
Yes.
The work to be done on the quote, I can't, I don't have the quote in front of me.
Right. Well, Bob has the, Bob, what was the total sum?
$7,300.
Or $7,300.
All right, to repair.
El Portal and Birchwood.
El Portal and bad section on, on Birchwood, okay, thank you. I need a second.
Before, before we do that.
Oh.
I had meant to bring up, they have put a few caveats in their proposal here. No guarantee on a seal coating application after October 1st. No guarantee on standing water. No guarantee on a seal coating adhering to asphalt that remains shaded underneath trees. Any concerns with that, Bob? Is that just standard? I mean, this is just a layer of asphalt. They don't, like, you don't get your driveway seal coat or anything like that.
They grind it out, how would you ask for that?
All right, so I need a second.
I'll second.
All right, Sam Paxton, seconds. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. You too, Rich? Yeah, I think it needs.
The other thing I reported, received the flare mower the other day. Getting it off, started doing some trimming. There was an issue with, we didn't know about, was there's a rubber flap that goes on the front of the flare mower that's not included with the stairwell flare mower. I don't think it's going to be a very expensive item, but as I'm trimming, stuff was flying out, hitting the windows of the tractor, and I'm going to break the windows off the tractor.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so now, all right, so you will handle the order?
Yep.
You know, for that and all, okay, report back to us, okay, thank you.
While we're on that subject, is it appropriate to talk about the letter that went out to the residents?
Let's do that. Look, you know, we didn't include it. I did include that under unfinished business, the trimming and street tours, okay? Thank you. All right, thank you, Bob. Plant commission, please, Isaac.
Yes, I'm pretty brief. We just heard the addition on, what is it? 3612 Birchwood. I just got a petition and then we're prepared to work on the tree ordinance. Report and give some comments.
Okay, thank you. And tree ordinance, all right, any questions for advisory plant commission? No, all right, thank you. Nothing from Matt and the BZA, although I can report that they did not have a meeting last month and were hoping to have one this month, but he did not respond yet to me when I texted him. I remember this morning that I should ask if they've set a date, but I didn't get anything back yet. So I'm not sure, he was hoping to do one this month and do it at least as a business meeting, so I'm not sure how that's going to go. I did not attend the white ditch meeting this morning, so I don't know of anything new that would take place there. I will find out and let everyone know next month after that meeting.
No.
Nothing? Okay, good, thank you, that's right. All right, website. Thank you for the report, Samantha, but anything?
Um, no, the website, lots of visits. We still have lots of traffic. When the emails go out, we get a lot more. It's all mobile traffic, even more than usual. It's sign of summer, I guess, in terms of the pages that, where people go, obviously always the homepage, but the beach stop 37 page, things about parks, beaches and trails, events, and the picnic page got a lot of traffic in July, so kind of the things you would expect. And we had six, six contact, two people reached out with questions for the town during the month. Same month, which is the same amount as last month. That seems to be on the higher end over the year, but I think as we get into fall and the winter, it will die down, so. Some of the questions are for, interestingly, we had someone asking about mowing and who mowed their corner and things like that, but they don't live in Michiana Shores, so we had to direct them to Michigan City. So if you're wondering the kind of questions we get, that and fire permits for beaches, which we send them over to Michiana, so.
Okay, thank you. Samantha, nothing new to report on NRC. There's going to be a meeting taking place. I believe it's supposed to be next Thursday. And I will be attending that meeting, so I'll let you know what takes place at that. Let's move on to the unfinished business, and that was the status on the tree and debris removal that had, was planned earlier, not those stuff that, for the residents, but is everything completed on that?
Everything was completed.
Okay.
Prior to the extended time that we gave the under.
Okay, everything was completed, okay. Thank you.
Thank you to Nick for taking care of it.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, any responses? Do we have anything out about the building commissioner enforcement officer?
Tonight, I, I was, we went back and forth, and I did not get it posted. It's getting posted tonight.
Okay, will be posted, okay, very good, thank you.
Send me the final language, so then I can post it in my support.
Sure, I'm good. I'll look for the email, so I think you guys have it in there.
Okay, good, okay. And any update on the dead trees, on the private property near the public roads?
I have not heard a thing from either property owner.
Okay, so they were, they were given letters, right? They were sent letters?
I don't know. I, I never followed up with Joan and burned out to find out. I never followed up with Joan and Brenda to find out if...
On the certified.
Yeah, the certified letter was signed.
All right.
Is Brenda or Joan on the line?
Well, let's see, is Joan still on?
Joan dropped off. Brenda is on the line, but she's muted.
Well, but she should hear us, right?
She should.
Brenda, if you can unmute yourself and if you know the status of the certified letters that were sent out to the two property owners about the dead trees. Okay. Just find out. I'll follow up with Brenda.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, now the trimming of street corners and roadside properties where growth is reaching into and over the streets. Back in the spring, we sent out a letter to all residents. Everyone got an electronic copy, every, those were registered. It was mentioned on the website and in an email, and everybody, every single person with an address, and that means everybody who owns property here, received a letter together with our spring newsletter and the information on the LEAF program with regards to trimming the trees. I had three responses, and I even went by a couple of the houses to look because they asked, have they done enough, you know, trimming where they were located? And they had indeed, you know, done a good job. I had not heard from anybody else yet, but as we were looking through this now to address the fact that Bob was going to start working on this, Samantha noticed that on one of the pages, on the second page, I didn't omit it and no one caught it when I sent it to everybody to look at, that we broke down July 1st on the first page and it was October 20th. I mean, that's my fault that I didn't notice it either, you know, but how much, let's just say, I'm going to see if there's a printed copy here.
Well, I just want a quick comment on Brad's response because Brad said that the town might have a good case to make for itself if there was a problem on the health and safety issue.
Okay.
So my thought is that if there are corners where the vision is blocked or stop sign is blocked.
Yeah.
Any type of sign, yield sign, stop sign is blocked, I think we should proceed with having Bob do the trimming once the equipment is safe for him. But that's just my opinion. I would throw that out as a point of discretion.
Yeah, and I think the letter was clear. You gave the property owners a certain deadline and take action themselves. That deadline is passed. It's just a matter of when you would start. It wasn't so much that I thought you would encounter resistance if you went out and decided you tried to assess it. I could see a clever property that are trying to make the argument that, well, I had to October 1st because that's what the second page said, but the first page is very clear. You have until July, wasn't 31st, July 1st to do this yourself.
I believe July 1st we gave it.
We're not assessing them anymore. We're doing the actual work.
And now Bob's saying it's going to be, you know, even how long that needs to take to come in.
It works.
Okay.
We're inching closer to October 1st now.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's true.
And again, as Sam reiterated, the idea is taking action now is appropriate for a contingency.
Okay, well, I agree with you. I like that.
I have to talk to the homeowner at the corner. Bob and I talked about land where he was going to start. He mentioned one property and I know the people, so I went and knocked on the door and spoke to the homeowner. He actually did trim off so they can see the stop sign, no. But there, you know, there's a lot of hanging branches still on his property and he recognizes that, you know, if that's a problem for the town to have it, you know, if we're consistent how we, how we do this, then no one can complain, so.
Yeah, we have to make sure that we, if we're doing it, we do everybody's, you know, who's hanging out there. Because I know the neighbor to the north of him as well has those bushes, the shrubs are hanging over the tree. If two cars come by, one car gets hit by every single branch on all of those, you know, on the right-hand side. So I don't think that those belong, you know, out there on the street either. Maybe that's just me, but you know, they're a little hanging out, they keep scratching anybody's car. So, anyway, okay, so we know that we can move on and do this, okay? All right. So then, any more questions on that or we good on that with the trimming? I think that in the past, just in FYI, it was included that we would charge the people. I don't remember, we didn't include it on this one, but I mean, that would be something that would have to go through, probably have a resolution or something if we're going to start charging for people to do that, you know, for the extra work. Just like if you mowed the lawn for somebody after they didn't do it and stuff like that.
We have to think through how we do that.
Right.
I think that's more complicated than it might be worth.
Could be, oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm just saying in the past, that was on those original letters that were sent out. Okay, new business, let's move on. Paving Birchwood at El Portal, we talked about that. We didn't, you know, we actually voted on it, didn't we?
Yeah.
We did, yep, so we're all good. Now, paving plan for 2025 for the CCM G-Manching Grant Fund. The engineering companies, the sooner that we do, make a decision now which company we want to use, you know, the sooner, because they're not both going to come out to do estimates for us on all those streets because they consider that as part of the job, you know, that has to be done. So part of that is already in old documents that exist. We know which streets were paved. They make recommendations, you know, on which streets they want, and then, of course, we come back and we tell them what we think, that, you know, okay, you said we really should be doing it, and I know some of the streets were like Arbutus and something else that had very little or no kind of a traffic over there. So we said, no, we have highly traveled roads that need more, you know, attention. So that's where we switched over, you know, the last time around. So we'll be able to say that too. So what was your thought on reviewing and looking at those roads?
Well, Bob and I had done a review a month or so ago and came up with a list.
Okay.
We based the estimates on the two-year-old estimates that we had. Undoubtedly, it's a more expensive one. I'd say we start with that. We need to get these guys to quote that. They made a general quote based on the size of the work that was done last year. This is different work. So we need to get comparable quotes. That's the other thing we got is it wasn't apples-to-apples quote. So we need to get that resolved.
Well, those weren't really even quotes. That was, those were their proposals for the work that they're going to do, not the quotes for the streets themselves.
Okay, well, fair enough.
Yeah, right.
Need to get them to see.
Right, so that if you, what we can do is we can invite them both to come, if you want, to the meeting to present how much each would be charging? Or do we just ask them for a, they could submit something to us in paper that we can look at?
Why don't we issue an RFP?
We can, for their work.
So that it's clear that everyone then has to propose on the same, those apples-to-apples.
Well, the other aspect, though, is we really are trying to look at maybe doing some mission work next year. It may turn out to be 2026, we don't know that.
For Michiana Drive?
Because it's complicated.
Right.
Right. Should we start the process with throwing that into the mix? Or is that a separate thing that we start after the first of the year?
I like that idea.
Which one?
Put it in, this in the overall, that we're going to put out.
At a minimum, I think maybe accumulating more information.
Yeah.
But I think it's going to take a long time.
Right, and I wouldn't want to have that stop any of the other work that we might potentially get and that. Now, I also don't want to have, I personally wouldn't like to have any kind of problems with the Indiana Department of Transportation that gives these grants that we're working on a street that we are working on together with Michigan, you know?
Well, I'm hoping the engineering firms would have experience with that sort of thing and can provide input and...
Okay. All right.
Instead of us figuring it out.
Oh, yeah, oh, no, no.
Yeah, just include it this year as a topic.
Yeah.
I'm going to gather a list and see if they kind of, their budget, their budget here is different than ours is.
Yeah, and if we include it, we could, if it doesn't work out, we don't do that work.
Right, okay.
But at least we have the numbers.
Have talked about it, okay. All right, sounds good. All right, so then I'll reach out to the two engineering firms and what we'll need to do is come up with, I'll try to put together the document that lists everything that they gave us before, okay? Because I got verbal answers from one and I got written proposals from someone else. And we already have the experience of one of them for the actual work that they did and we know how much we paid them for everything from start to finish. So, okay, let's see, attorney report. Brad?
All right, we got a few different things going on. Just giving you a brief update without getting into too much of legal specifics. The Cummins matter, as we talked about in executive session, just prior to the hearing in the beginning of August, they filed a motion for summary judgment as well as a motion for declaratory judgment, trying to establish one that they had now homestead on the property and then timeframe for when any length of citations will be valid. So we had the hearing August 1st, early enough to just inform the court for the status of their filings and then the court gave us or gave me the deadline of September 2nd to file a written response to those things. In the meantime, I have communicated with the county as far as the homestead status of the property when I was applying for. What I've asked for from their attorney, from Cummins attorney, is actual evidence filed under their state act returns. They did file an extension this year, but, you know, I don't need the full return necessarily. Now they showed me the front page of an Indiana return for 23, 22, whatever. So that will be addressed in briefing before September 2nd. In the meantime, I did have a very frank discussion with his attorney, and this did result, there's still some fines, there's some liability, which is service change numbers, so I haven't heard back from him on that yet.
Okay.
So that's time, so without getting into it, we'll just get. The Eureka's, I knew a hot word with them as far as the option of the town, where you don't have to give a dumpster, I'm not connected with them on that. Small claims cases, we did file six of those, so they're in the process. The way that it works is we split them into two groups, that way they were still efficient but not taking up a whole morning. So next Wednesday, the first set is obligated to call my office at a set time. If they do not call, then we get it called, they call, we either agree that it will be out or they say they're going to dispute it, or they just have an actual Eureka. The next group is the week after that. I held off on one, and I'll explain that. That conveniently is one of $148.57. But as we went to file it and pulled up the county report on Beacon, it's a different one. So, and Joan's not on right now, but what I'm going to confirm with this, it looks like the invoice was from 2023, and it was for July, December 2023. The property changed hands in August of 2023, which could be a good thing. Maybe the new owners already paid their next bill, you know?
Okay.
So there's nothing, maybe it's just we're sending the bill to the wrong person. Because even my letter went to where the bill was originally set in 23, so.
Good.
And I only get $148.57. You're going to incur $115 by the fee. Let's try to get that first.
Okay.
Blasts, banks, they are amiring files.
They are doing what?
They're amiring the file this year.
Oh, excellent, very good. Okay, good. Thank you. All right, any questions for Brad? Nothing else? Okay, thank you very much. Any miscellaneous business? No? Down to communications received. First was that text comment regarding, or it was actually an email regarding the signage at the intersection of Palhatten and Sunset. I believe I forwarded that to everyone. And I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at, you know, what that said and the concern with the sign that was up there. There was a photo that was included too, I think on that.
There were ring videos, ring cable videos.
Yes.
Of five, I think five videos of cars that are coming from the north on Sunset and make a right on, I guess it's Sunset, that extends out to where Dead Ends along the creek. And they immediately turned and realized that they had gone the wrong way and just basically do some form of a U-turn to correct, correct themselves. It seemed to me like the complaint from the, from the resident that sent this was that there's a safety concern there. It appeared from the video that these cars were all going like five miles an hour. How a pedestrian could, there could be a pedestrian issue. It does look like there's trimming that's needed on that corner. You know, where that truck, that tree is like in the middle of the triangle. But my, I guess, I don't, I mean, I kind of understand like no outlet sign or something like that would be helpful. I just don't know where you, because if you put it on the section of, am I using the right terms on, or the next term is Sunset?
Sunset, it is Sunset that works that way.
It continues to make a hard grab, correct?
Palhatten.
Palhatten.
This is where your sign was up there this spring.
There's a sign there.
Yes.
No outlet.
Yeah.
Oh, you found that already up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a sign there.
I was putting a sign up, but after, that lives at the Verden House.
Yes.
Asked me if he can have the old signs to put up back there.
Right.
Last one that started all the hoop up the neighbor, now all the signs are gone. And you know.
Yes.
This sign is there. Do they not get in the streets for that?
Yeah, it says Dead End, No Turnaround, and the other sign says Do Not Enter. There's nothing, you know, well, Dead End, I don't know what else. No Turnaround, that's pretty clear. So I don't know how else we would solve his problem, but I just wanted to let you know. He sent, you know, tech, he did send me texts and emails, but the same thing, you know, you know, and this and that, so.
What does he want us to do, a bridge up or road closed?
I am not sure. I do know that his neighbor immediately, I guess it would be sort of more eastwise, made great complaints to me about two years ago, you know, about the same thing, people turning around in her driveway and she was concerned about them knocking over her, you know, boulders or her, whatever it is. And I'm like, people turn around, I understand, but people, hey, I may be sometimes on a road somewhere and I will pull over to the, you know, on the verge and then I will back into somebody's driveway if I need to turn around. What are you going to do? You know, but, so any kind of particular response you want me to give this gentleman? Thanks for the note, Bob.
Solid sign.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
I would say we think they're setting a good sign.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, so the next thing was the email that was received today, which I forwarded to you as soon as I got, which was about the pickleball, concern that two pickleball courts will increase the noise on that corner. I just forgot to look, she did write in Andrews Town, I believe, but I didn't check which one it is physically, which house. You know, I mean, I don't remember which one.
Well, I'd say forward it to the park board.
Park board, yeah.